Steve, you ready? I now call this meeting of the Cranston City Council to order. At this time, I would ask everyone to please turn off their cell phones. Clerk, please take the roll.
Here.
Present.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Present.
Present. Is there a motion dispensed with the reading of the minutes of the last meeting?
So moved.
Which have been made in seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start the meeting, will you please join me in a moment of silence in memory of former Cranston Police Chief Anthony Moretti, the father of our internal auditor, Anthony Moretti. Anthony, condolences from the entire city council on your loss. Public acknowledgements and commendations, citations from the Cranston East Girls Volleyball State Division Two Champions. Councilman Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President, again. Cranston is the city of champions. We have citations for the Cranston East Girls Volleyball State Division Two Champions. I'm going to call out your name if you could come stand right up here facing the audience. Mackenzie Richards. Samantha Levy. Amanda Hay. Lauren Guzman. Emily Fagundes. Hannah Mason. Jessica Tang. Joanna Wong. Rosini Felix. Emily Miller. Victoria Bowery. Okay, I was just told by the coach that's it, so I'll go through all these. We even gave you one. Megan McGonigal, coach. Council President, the Cranston East Girls Volleyball State Division Two Champions. Would you like to say a couple of words? You got... No? Yes? Come right over here.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you, everybody. This really was an excellent season. The girls worked extremely hard all season long with a 17-0 record. We were undefeated, state champions, and it was all the tireless effort and work that these girls put in. I want to thank you for acknowledging them. That's really excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Be careful of the wires.
Our next on the agenda is public hearings. Anyone from the public like to speak on any docketed item? Please step forward, give your name and address for the record. Oh, before we continue, though, there's been some ordinance number 10-16-04, petition for signage at 950 Phoenix Avenue, has been withdrawn by the applicant.
Thank you, Council President Lanny, and members of the city council. For the record, Robert Murray, I'm an attorney with the firm of Taffeta McSally located at 21 Garden City Drive in Cranston. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of ordinance 9-16-03, which is the change of zone ordinance for the property at 1191 Pontiac Avenue. Eleven days ago, we appeared before the ordinance committee and had a lengthy hearing. I just, I know many members of the council were there that evening, but I would like just to reiterate for the record a few, a few points for your consideration in hopes that this council will adopt and approve of the ordinance as presented. This property is well-known to the members of the council and the public. It's at the corner of Sacanosa Crossroads and Pontiac Avenue. It's designated as Lot 39 and assesses plat 10. It is commonly referred to as the Ruggieri floor covering building. My client, 1191 Pontiac LLC, has entered into a purchase and sale agreement to buy this with the hope that the council will rezonate from the existing M2 heavy industrial zone to C4 classification, which is one of the highway business commercial services designation. Mr. Jeffrey Salatin spoke at the ordinance committee. Mr. Salatin is known to this council as someone with a keen interest in the commercial corridor of Sacanosa Crossroads and Pontiac Avenue. He's redeveloped extensive properties in that area, and this, this property is one that he has taken an interest in and would like to go forward with the hopes of, with the hopes that the existing tenants will stay there, but develop it as an appropriate commercial property. It's about 1.36 acres. As I stated, Ruggieri floor covering is the primary tenant. Sprint Telephone is also a tenant in the building. This property is unique that it has no access on Sacanosa Crossroads directly or Pontiac Avenue. There are no curb cuts on either street. Access to this property is through wholesale Way, which is, runs off of Sacanosa Crossroads. There are no plans to change the configuration of that. First of all, Pontiac Avenue, a curb cut there would require a physical alteration permit from the state of Rhode Island. And given the, the area and the traffic on both these streets, I don't believe that the city or the state would approve a curb cut, and we're not looking for a curb cut on either street. As I stated, we're asking you to rezonate from the M2 to the C4 zone, which would be entirely consistent with the 2010 comprehensive plan adopted by the planning commission and city council. As you know, the comprehensive plan and the land use map is a guide that the, not only the planning department and planning commission proposed, but this city council endorsed with a vote, I believe, in 2012. The comprehensive plan calls for this parcel and this entire area to be rezoned from the M2 and general, general industry zone to highway business. It is, I think we can all agree that this area of Sacanosa and Pontiac Avenue is no longer considered an industrial area. It's, it's morphed into a commercial area, and this zone change would be consistent with that. As I said at the ordinance committee, the land use element of the comprehensive plan identifies this property for high, highway commercial services as a land use, and under that category in the comprehensive plan, there are three zoning classifications, C3, C4, and C5 deemed appropriate. We have selected the C4 category, which is consistent with the appendix that's in the comprehensive plan that specifically identifies this property and others in the area to be rezoned from M2 to C4. At the ordinance committee meeting, there was some discussion about what Mr. Salatin's intentions with the property are, and I think he forthrightly said at the time that he has no immediate plans other than to hope to retain the existing tenants. The, there was some question, you know, why we don't have a specific plan. First, he doesn't have control of the property yet, and we're hoping to work out long-term leases with the tenants, but if, for example, one of them moves out, that will affect on how the building is configured and what other tenants may come into the building. So that's why we don't have a specific plan that we're showing you this evening, other than to say that what's there is pretty much what's going to be reflected in the future under the new zoning classification. There was also some discussion about whether or not the drive-through use was appropriate for the site. There was some discussion about that. Under the C4 zoning classification and schedule of uses, drive-through banks and restaurants are permitted use in the C4 zone. I think that's entirely appropriate. There's only two zoning classifications you allow drive-throughs, C4 and C5, and we would respectfully ask that that limitation not be placed on this zone change if the council was inclined to approve it. You know, if the, if the council on a, on a broad basis wants to reexamine the scheduled uses and, and what zoning classifications drive-throughs should be allowed, then that's certainly within your prerogative. I, I don't think we should limit this particular property. I've been unable to identify any other zone change in the last several years where that limitation was, was put on. So I would hope that the council would consider not imposing that restriction. Beyond that, Mr. President, I thank you for your time. We'll be available to any members who didn't ask questions at the ordinance committee. I would be remiss, before I step down, I just want to acknowledge and thank Councilman Bott, Councilman Aceto, and Councilman Santa Maria for their service. I may not have a chance to do it later in the meeting as a citizen, and Myrow's been my ward councilman. I just want to wish them well for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Good evening, Council President and members of the council. For the record, my name is Joseph Brennan at 33 College Hill Road, Warwick Ward Island, 02886. I am here in opposition for ordinance 9-16-03 for the zone change at 1191 Pontiac Avenue, filed by Ruggieri Floor Fashions, Inc. I'm here today representing Renaissance Park Association, Renaissance Development Corp., and Janco Central, who are butters directly to the property, more specifically, which was mentioned at the ordinance hearing, Webster Bank, and the Burger King parcels. I have with me tonight, who can speak after me briefly, we'll keep it as concise as we can, David Westcott of Mason &amp; Associates and Todd Brayton of Bryant Associates, as was a traffic engineer. First, I'd just like to mention that we understand that this is within the comprehensive plan of the city of Cranston, and we actually have no objections to that fact. Main contentions that we have with the property are that currently, to our understanding, it is conforming under the M2 zone, and by switching it to a C4 zone, you actually create non-conforming aspects of it. I noticed on their application that they haven't asked for any variances for landscape setbacks or parking. If they were to ask for that, I know the council has full authority under an old Supreme, round Supreme Court case, Kamara versus the city of Warwick, where it basically states that the council is a legislative body, and they can provide relief for those items that are normally reserved to the zoning board. So our problem is that you actually are creating a non-conforming property without that relief being actually requested, as those Supreme Court cases suggest you would need to have to be able to go forward. Additionally, in granting the zone change, it would be for the purpose of promoting the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the city as defined in the city code of ordinances, and we would argue that that corner that we have there is currently a mess. It's, it's not very good for traffic. I live in the, I used to live in the area. My mother currently lives in the area. I drive by it frequently, and that stoplight in that corner there at the CVS can be tied up for a very long time. Cars are cut through other side, side route, side roads to get around the light, going through the Burger King and Webster Bank properties quite often, so it's not in the public health and welfare. We actually think that this project will help to exacerbate the traffic problem if they were to change, because the drive-through use is that main thing that we have. If, if the city does believe that it should be changed to a C4, we would respectfully request that the drive-through condition, be conditioned that a drive-through be not allowed in the use, because that is an extremely intensive use. I know it did come up before, because we own Burger King and we have Webster Bank, oh, so why can you do it and they can't? And the point is, is that we're currently there, and eventually you reach a tipping point of problems, and, and we're at that tipping point at that intersection, and we're a current business owner who's going to be affected by it, and I believe that through the public safety and welfare provision, we're one of those businesses that the city should look at and the city should protect. Additionally, in filing the zone change, you have to look at this exact, specific parcel, because that's what we're dealing with, and all the other parcels around that are C4 are much larger and have much bigger parking areas to be able to park, and that's one of the items that they actually no longer are in compliance with when you change them to C4 that they haven't requested relief for. And additionally, we're just kind of concerned that why ask to be changed to a C4? I know that they said they have no plan to do anything as of now, but that, that concerns us, because we were under the impression that Ruggieri's carpet was actually already on the move to Putnam Pike, so to be conditioned of the sale upon that zone change, I know he explained that their plan is to keep the rents and everything that they got going with the current tenants, and that going forward into the future, they just want that designation for future plans, but if, if we were to take that for its word without seeing an actual plan, I would probably like to see those, maybe a lease agreement to already be proposed or extended out. At this time, I'm going to hand it over to, if, if the council president allows, to David Westcott, and then afterwards to our traffic engineer, so we can stay on the same project and, and be done with our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is David Westcott. For the record, I am chief planner for Mason &amp; Associates. I have a written statement, which we can hand out, but I will summarize it, with Mason &amp; Associates at 71 Plainfield Pike in Situate, Rhode Island. Thank you. I'll just summarize that very briefly in the interest of time. If you take a look at the first photograph in here, you can see the difference between this lot and all the lots that surround it, and the difference is that this is about 1.3 acres of property with a half-acre building on top of it. If, once it's zoned commercial, it has about half the parking that's required of all the other commercial users on that particular property. Not, not a very small amount less, about half the required parking. Parking on that property right now, I mean, they conform as a warehouse, a flooring warehouse with a showroom, where they only need to provide enough parking for their employees, but if you turned that building retail, there are nowhere near enough parking. They have no landscape buffer. Everybody else there had to set back their parking lot five feet, and the first parking space had to be five feet back from the edge of the road. There is no five-foot buffer there. In fact, these cars park on the road and, on the sidewalk, and they block handicapped access to the property. There is no landscape buffer. You can't use that building for a drive-through. Why not? Because while it's, everybody checked to make sure this is compatible with the comprehensive plan, but nobody checked to see if it's compatible with the zoning. And the zoning says a drive-through has to be a single freestanding building. There's two buildings on this site, and they share a common wall. You can't drive around the building, because it doesn't have enough setback for a drive-around. If you can't drive around it and you can't, don't have enough parking, how are you going to add six queuing spaces and five waiting spaces that would go with a drive-through restaurant? And yet, the purchase and sale agreement is contingent on the zone change and the permission for a drive-through. The applicant was offered 11 days ago in the ordinance committee, how about we do this without a drive-through, and declined to accept that. Clearly, the drive-through is an important part of that contingency. Oh, I'm sorry, am I turning it off? But the applicant didn't ask you, you have the power to grant a variance. You could say, okay, it's all right to keep this building even though it doesn't have enough parking, but the applicant didn't ask for a variance. And why didn't they ask for a variance? Because they're not planning on keeping that building, and they're not keeping, planning on keeping those, those existing tenants. The applicant said, we want to be forthright, but they also said they wanted to keep the tenants in the building, when the tenants have said when the property sells, they'll move out. They hope to retain the existing tenant. No, they hope to add a fast food restaurant, because that's what we really need here in Cranston now, is another fast food restaurant. So think about that when you're voting on this particular proposal. It's not really about keeping those parcels and conforming to the comprehensive plan. It's about changing the zoning to accommodate a new use on that property. And the problems with the use on that property can be described by Bryant engineers, who can talk a little bit about the serious traffic problem at that intersection.
Before you continue, we went through this at the ordinance committee meeting, the same spiel. Summarize it quickly. You're only supposed to have four minutes, and you've got about 15 so far. So please summarize within four minutes.
Good evening. I also have a, a letter report to distribute. My name is Todd Brayton. I am with Bryant Associates with offices in Lincoln, Rhode Island, and we were hired by the Jan companies to look at the potential impact of the zone change at the subject parcel at 1191 Pontiac Avenue. So we, we've looked at, done a traffic study of the potential change in use from M2 to C4, which would potentially allow a fast food restaurant with a drive-through. We had, did some traffic counts at November 22nd, 2016. We found that there's unacceptable levels of service at the intersection of Pontiac Avenue, Sacanosa Crossroad, and the CVS driveway, which is on the opposite side of Sacanosa Crossroad. We've also done some, some observations of the traffic operations in the area, specifically, again, at that intersection. We found that the queues extend during the PM peak periods on Pontiac Avenue to the north beyond the Pedacosta intersection, which is the next signalized intersection to the north of that intersection. On Sacanosa Crossroad, the queues extend past Wholesale Way, which, as was mentioned earlier, is the access point for, for the subject parcel, which would, would make it difficult for, for vehicles to come out of that driveway. And we also observed, again, during the PM peak periods, traffic cutting through the, using the Webster Bank driveway and the Burger King driveway, cutting through those parking lots to get to Sacanosa Crossroad to bypass the, the signalized intersection of Sacanosa Crossroad and Pontiac Avenue. The intersection is, is beyond capacity, and adding more traffic may just exacerbate that problem. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public like to speak on any docketed item?
Good evening, Jeff Salatin. I just wanted to respond to some of the comments that were made by the planner, and also to just review for you a few of the things that Bob indicated to you. As you know, we've repositioned about 10 buildings within a half a mile radius. We did the Aldi's repositioning. We did the Tally's building. We repositioned the eight buildings at Sacanosa Crossroad, called Crossroads Office Park. We also repositioned a building on Sharp, Sharp Drive, just two doors from Channel 10. The building's address is 40 Sharp Drive, where we brought a couple Fortune 100 companies. Humana's in the building. Siemens is in the building. So I think we've been a, an excellent citizen here in Cranston, and I think that one thing that's very, very important is that our word is as important as our work. And at the ordinance committee, we pointed out that you knew as much as we knew about what we intend to do at that property, but I want to review it for all of the, the council members. Ruggieri's has already relocated their, their warehouse and their commercial division to Western Cranston, and we're in active conversations with them for them to retain a retail showroom in, in the building. A significantly less amount of square footage than presently, because presently they're occupying all but about 3,200 square feet in the building. As you also know, Sprint is there. They're committed for a number of years under an existing lease, and we have no other tenant. We haven't entered into any negotiations or anything with anyone. The planner, who spoke a moment ago, misstated quite a few things. Specifically, I don't know how he knows the purchase and sale agreement, but a contingency for a drive-through is not in that document. I don't know what he's talking about. We are very aware of the need for users to have adequate parking, and we're also very aware on how much the zone calls for parking in relationship to the amount of square feet that's in that building. So first of all, that building will never be larger. Number two, more than likely, it'll be smaller, and we expect to, to come before a site plan and plan review and meet all the obligations that we have under that, under that responsibility that we have. We respectfully request that we be allowed to have the C4 zone, which is the exact zone that the Janiki companies have. It's the exact zone that the Pawtucket Credit Union building has, the building that's owned by Carpi Auto Properties, and all we want to do is to respectfully request of you that our zone be consistent with your comprehensive plan, and specifically, as it's targeted in your plan, as Bob indicated, the C4 zone is very appropriate. And I'd be glad to answer any further questions, but simply, that's what our business plan is, is to create jobs, create an increase in your tax base, and do the best job we can for ourselves and the city of Cranston. Does anybody have any questions? I'd be glad to address it.
No questions. Anybody else from the public like to speak on any docketed item? Come forward, give your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Peter Lapola. I'm the director of planning. I know, four minutes. You're asking a lot. Is director of planning for the city of Cranston. Number one, I'm here. The city plan commission and our GIS has submitted a zoning ordinance. We did this at the ordinance committee. I won't go through chapter and verse, proposing to basically make a, informationally digitized zoning map. We think this is good for the city so that, because our maps now date back to 1965, is our choices are to stick with stuff that's sort of archaic, out of date, doesn't reflect reality, or to modernize our map over the 21st century. I can, I'll be here to answer any questions. And once again, it's unique that I'm here. I usually don't, because I'm here, I wind up speaking. I'm not usually here to speak on behalf of another zoning article. We give our recommendations, but there's some misinformation out there. First of all, with regards to lot size, yes, this lot isn't as big as the other lots in the area, but if this is a C4 zoning, for the record, C4 zoning, the minimum lot size is 12,000 square feet. This lot is way in excess of 12,000 square feet. Then a lot next door, maybe 50,000 or three acres or four acres, C4 legal lot size is 12,000 square feet would comply. This lot currently doesn't comply for the zoning in M2. It's pre-existing non-conforming for that area requirement, so we're not creating new non-conformities. In fact, we may be lessening non-conformities. M2... M2's lot size is 50,000 square, 60,000 square feet, this is about 58,000 square feet, and it doesn't meet the front yard and side yard setbacks. This will still not meet the front yard and side yard setbacks. But what's missing from all this is that this is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and that's, I'm a fanatic on that, because it's the law, is this land is currently zoned industrial. When you look at, and when we did the comprehensive plan, when you look at the land use category, land used activities that are around that area, and where we think this land should be going, and the city council agreed at the time, this land in no way possible should be zoned industrial. First of all, we've had trouble filling the industrial space that should be industrial. And second of all, when you look at the uses, if we have anything that's sort of a downtown, this is our downtown, and we should not be having industrial land in our downtown, it should be commercial. And again, we have two commercials, this is not neighborhood commercials, not geared towards the neighborhoods, there is no neighborhood, there are no residences probably within a quarter of a mile, maybe a half a mile to some residences and back. It is geared to the traffic on the road and traffic that's sort of passing through the community, it's geared towards the road system, that's highway business, the appropriate zone is C3, C4, C5. C3 would not be appropriate, because it's a setback requirement, so less stringent. C4 is probably most appropriate, that's why we said it that way, C5 is a mix of industrial, commercial. So the question is, and what the law says is, you shall bring the zoning into compliance with the comprehensive plan, and that's all we're doing, is we don't need, and again, I will stress, is that this is policy, zoning applies. Because if you don't like a specific use in the zoning ordinance and the use table, change the use table. When again, what I was saying, they almost made my argument for me, is if they think their fast food can't meet zoning, and their argument is, all right, fast food can't meet zoning, when they apply for a fast-food establishment, they can't get it, because it doesn't comply. So it's, the question is, do we follow the comprehensive plan, and do we make the lots consistent, which is what the state law says, and I will parenthetically say, what our charter dictates. Our charter says, all land use decisions, once it's adopted by the city council, shall be in conformance with the comprehensive plan. I didn't write the charter, you guys did the charter. I would strongly urge that this zone change go through, simply to be, follow the law and to be consistent with the charter.
Is there anyone else from the public like to speak on any docketed item? Hearing none, public hearing is now closed. Before we continue, I'd like to acknowledge that Councilman, citywide-elect Ken Hopkins is in the audience. Ken, congratulations. Resolutions, are there any resolutions? Also, Councilman-elect from the 2nd ward, Paul McCauley. Paul, congratulations. And I'm just reminded, since I don't think I've met the individual, Trent Colford, congratulations, Trent, new councilman in Ward 5.
Four.
Four, sorry.
Chris, you're fired. There was a recount.
All right, no resolutions, report of committees, the ordinance committee chairman, Arquero.
Thank you, Council President. First item on the agenda, 9-16-03, ordinance amendment of Chapter 17 of the Code of the City of Cranston, 2005, entitled "Zoning: Change of Zone 1191 Pontiac Avenue," petition filed by Regury Floor Fashions Incorporated, 1191 Pontiac LLC. Do entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, and there's a second, under discussion, any discussion? Councilman Senator Maria?
Thank you, I wasn't at the committee meeting, I would have brought this up, if I even remember, back, and I think it was 2001, 2002, Krispy Kreme came on the location, and there was a big uproar about traffic and the whole bit, and one of the gentlemen mentioned Webster Bank. Webster Bank is currently on that property, so it's basically, from what I'm hearing, it's okay for them to be there, and they were the ones that were supposedly going to start the traffic, make the traffic worse, and the traffic didn't become worse. And I can't see where this is going to cause more traffic, because they have more room in the back. And as Mr. Lapola said so eloquently, we have to follow the comprehensive plan. So barring all that, the same, for the same reasons, I will be supporting this.
Chairman Arquero.
Thank you, Council President, just a few questions, if you may. Through the chair, Mr. Lapola, Mr. Lapola, I want a one-word answer. Okay, either for or against, is the planning board for or against this project?
It's for.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you. Second, through the chair of the administration, has the traffic engineer done a study pertaining to the questions about traffic on this project? That's a yes, no? Mr. Coop, has our traffic engineer done any studies on, it's only the other business in that area that hired a traffic engineer to do a study, correct?
That may be the case, I can't speak to that directly, but I can say, our traffic engineer was not approached to have any input.
Okay, that's what I, so it's kind of null on that, we really don't have the information from the administration.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. One last question, through the chair, Mr. Coop. Mr. Coop, what's the administration's position on this project? Does it have a position?
The planning commission considered it, and the administration doesn't take a position otherwise.
Okay, it has no position?
It's been voted on by the planning commission.
All right, thank you very much, thank you, Council President.
Councilman Botts.
Thank you, Council President. I oppose this in committee, and I won't go on and on about why, other than the fact that if you vote for the zoning change to C4, you're essentially voting for a drive-through on this piece of land. And I live in Ward 2, this is in Ward 6, but unfortunately, when I get off 37, I have to cut through this area to get home. Anyone that's driven through this area at rush hour knows the traffic problems that are here. Now, I don't understand, we, Councilman Senator Maria mentioned 2001, 2002 with the Krispy Kreme, I believe at that time, we didn't have the Aldis there, we didn't have the Brewed Awakenings there, we didn't have any of those businesses, a lot of those businesses that are currently there. You know, one of the main complaints I received while campaigning was that the traffic is bad in that area, that was one of the main complaints. Putting something in here with the drive-through, and I know everyone keeps saying, we don't have any plans for a drive-through, but when you come in and ask for a C4 zoning, you know, I think the writing's on the wall. And I think one of the hopes of this council, and I recall this being presented maybe last year, was that this parcel of land was going to be purchased by another entity, and traffic improvements are going to be made for that intersection. And that seems to have gone by the wayside. So now, I'm not sure if that's ever going to happen, and we're adding more density into the area. So again, I'll just put it in stark terms, if you vote for this, you're voting for a drive-through, I'm opposed, thank you.
Councilman Vecchio.
Thank you, Council President. Since this is in my ward, I have to take a, you know, strong look at it. But what strikes me is that there are no neighbors, there are no people from the area that have come out to speak against it, only a competing business, which bothers me a little bit. Usually, there'll be many neighbors that will come out in opposition to a project which they think will adversely affect them personally. I think that the comprehensive plan, which many of us voted on, I think we need to follow. The fact that a usage, we don't like a usage in that, in that particular classification, I think is something we could address. But this is an area where Panera just put in a drive-through, just up the street on Sakonasa, and I haven't seen any appreciable difference in traffic over there. I know it's a little different at the corner, but it's significant, because there's no curb cut onto Pontiac, and I think the curb cut is pretty far, I think they have to exit pretty far up Sakonasa, as it is. The fact that the building is large, buildings can be torn down, and something small can be put up, I mean, there's so many variables that come into play with commercial development. As Mr. Lapola said, if there's any place in the city that's considered a commercial downtown type of area, that's it. Of course, you know, there's always a, we don't like to see a lot of drive-throughs, because it does add some traffic. But there are some other developments, which, to address Councilman Bott's concern, I think there will be some improvements on the property behind it, and some other access roads in development over the next few years. So I'm not as concerned down the road, but I think the, I think we have to follow the comprehensive plan, otherwise, we're going to be in violation of state law very soon, because we had so many, we have so many months to comply with that law. So because there's no opposition to it, I think I'm in favor of allowing this change, and if we need to change the zoning classification, then we could.
Councilman Freina.
Thank you, Council President. You know, I take a little bit of different tactic, as my colleague, Councilman Vecchio, you know, I look at this as, the applicant could have asked for a 33, C4, C5. You know, C3 might be more appropriate, there was no analysis done by the planning commission on C3, the applicant asked for C4. That being said, C4 allows a drive-through. Right now, there's no plan, that I see, that would show me the use of that property. I know there's density impacts that happen in a C4 that are available in a C3, I mean, the recommendation that we put a condition on there, that we don't have a drive-through, so the applicant could come back before us with a plan, that we could then review and change the zone to allow the drive-through. Unfortunately, the applicant was not amenable to that, so I'll be voting against this. I don't think we should change the zone without seeing a plan, I understand it does not conform with the comprehensive plan, but they could have easily have asked for C3, we could have reviewed C3, or we could have put a restriction on C4, and had them come back before the body with a specific plan, a traffic study, things we could look at tangibly. I think the reason there is no opposition here tonight from the neighborhood, is that there is no plan. This looks on paper like it's a simple zone change, not a zone change for a Starbucks with a drive-through, or Dunkin' Donuts with a drive-through, or Wendy's with a drive-through. This is just an application for a zone change contingent with our comprehensive plan. There is no plan backing this up, so I'll be voting against it.
Councilman Aschito, then Councilman Stychos.
Through the chair, I guess there was a traffic engineer here from Renaissance Partners, could I ask him a question? Is he available? Or did he leave? So when you conducted your study, did you take any consideration of an access road that's going to be running parallel to 37?
No, I did not.
So if that road, let's say, it gets built three, four, five, six years down the road from now, what effect would that have on the numbers? It would definitely affect your numbers, as far as taking traffic away from Sakonasa and placing it someplace else, correct?
It's hard to say exactly without looking at it and knowing what it is and analyzing it, but I would imagine it would have an impact, yes.
It would, thank you.
Councilman Stychos.
I have a question for Mr. Lapola. The attorney from Janco said, or I guess maybe it was the planner, maybe it was both of them, said that we're changing the zone, and it's, the property is non-conforming to the new zone. Is that something we should be worrying about?
No. I'll give you a quick, the short answer is no, the longer answer is, what we're doing is, and I've said this the last time, we're rezoning the land, with the proposal in the comp plan, they're acting on our comp plan, the proposal is to rezone the land to allow future development. The current site does not conform in, and rezone for some of the dimensional and density setbacks. If we change it to C4, those same, relatively same dimension, dimensional and density set, the dimensional and density require, non-conformities exist, either way. But what this allows the site to do is to, we did this with the devol site, the citizen site, we did this with the training school site, zone it to what the appropriate zone should be, so that we can do a future development on that site, that's consistent, one, with the zoning, and then consistent with the zoning table, is if you don't rezone, if you leave at M2, it's going to stay M2, if you zone at C4, it'll be C4. And not to argue with, or to make a point with the council member, C3 allows much, much more density than a C4, and that's one of the reasons why the comp plan calls for C4.
Councilman Aschito.
Yeah, Mr. Lapola, one more question, please. So if indeed, this zone change comes through and it goes to C4,
Yes.
and then they decide, two, three, four years down the line, to knock the building down and do something else with the property, say it was going to be a fast-food restaurant, wouldn't they have to go through a whole bunch of hearings and site plan and review, and come back to the council and everything else?
They would, no, they would not necessarily have to come back, they would have to come back to the council for a license to do a restaurant, a food establishment license. How you guys handled that, I don't know, that's not my jurisdiction. On the zoning side, on the land use side, that site would be subject to a development plan review, in which the development plan review committee, which is planning, traffic, the traffic division, planning division, the building inspector, engineering, and fire safety, do a professional level review, one, for consistency with the zoning, to make sure it's consistent with the zoning, or it gets sent for variances, they can apply for variances, and two, to look at impacts and mitigation. And what we do is, if a project can't be mitigated, if an impact can't be mitigated, it won't be approved. So one of the things we do look at, we look at consistency with zoning compliance with zoning, and impacts, including traffic. And there are standards for drive-throughs, we would be applying those standards. If it's a drive-through, and once again, I don't know.
Councilman Freina.
I have a question, Mr. Lapola. I know, it's just one quick one. Did the Phoenix Lodge conform with the comprehensive plan?
Which one now?
The second one.
The apartment complex?
Yes.
It, it could have complied with the comp plan, that area was designated as a special redevelopment area.
So the answer is yes.
Within the city, there are areas where we know the zoning is wrong, we didn't know, we didn't necessarily know what the zoning should be. The lodges was one of those areas, I can go through the list of them. But, so technically, it would have complied, should the city council and its wisdom choose to change the zoning, because it was designated as a special development area.
So what you're saying is, that would have complied, but we didn't change the zoning, we changed it to something else that also complied? So that, you answered my question.
The comp plan did not, did not designate a specific zoning classification for the lodges, it's a special project area.
I have the opinion in my bag, I can pull it out, it said that, yes, it did comply, and then we didn't.
It does, because...
Thank you.
Councilman Senator Maria.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Lapola, you might as well stay up there. Roughly, how many parcels right now are designated industrial? And to follow off on that, is there much of a call for, do they, do people want industrial, or do they want to do zone change such as this?
Well, I can't tell you exactly how many parcels. What we did when we did the comp plan, is we kept, most of the industrial areas industrial. And what we did keep is, some of the land use, some of the land use areas that were slated to go to industrial from the 92 plan is industrial. So all the, our industrial parks still stay industrial, some of the land off of Cituit Avenue is slated to go to industrial. And the areas that, now, this is a prime example, the areas that have historically been zoned industrial, such as along Sakonasa Crossroads, in which the market has moved on, we moved it with the market. And what we have found, since I've been here, so I've been here about 10 years, I've been here since the recession, I didn't bring the recession, but I've been here since the recession, is that there, while we have kept the land industrial, there has not been, it's changing now, but there has not been extremely high demand for industrial uses. What we constantly see before the plan commission, is the plan commission makes recommendations on variances, is industrial property coming in saying, we need a use variance for a use that's not loud industrial, it's usually commercial, or some sort of service activity, because my building has been vacant for the last five years, and this use is coming in, no other use is coming. So there is a demand, it's not a high demand, it's been a struggle to keep our industrial land that's zoned, and should be used as industrial, industrial.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council President.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Farina?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Next item on the agenda, Council President, 9-16-10, ordinance amendment of Chapter 17.04.08.020, Dakota City of Cranston, 2005, entitled "Zoning: District Boundaries," submitted by Mayor Fung.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made, second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Farina?
Yes.
Councilman Stiches?
Yes.
Councilman Fox?
Yes.
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 Next item, 10-16-04, has been withdrawn, Council President. So we're going to 9-16-06, ordinance in amending Chapter 10.40.070 of the Code of the City of Cranston, 2005, entitled "Solicitation on Roadways Prohibited and Changing It to Prohibition Against Distribution to Occupant Vehicles," sponsored by Mayor Fung and Vice President Santa Maria, Councilman Farina, Bottz, Paploskis, and Councilman Vecchio. This is informational only, no action. This failed in committee 11-17 of 16. Council President.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Arquette. Before we continue, I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Gasha and the Boy Scout troop that's here this evening. I know you guys are bored, but please stand up so we can see who you are. Okay, Mr. Gasha, you're in charge, you can send them home now. Finance Committee, Chairman Stychos.
Okay, we just have two routine matters. One is the resolution approving real estate tax abatements recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion made, second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Farina?
Yes.
Councilman Stiches?
Yes.
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 And the next is the motor vehicle, waiver of motor vehicle tax, what is it called here?
Tax.
Abatement.
Motion made, second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Next on the agenda is public hearings.
Anyone in the public would like to speak on any item, docketed or undocumented. Please come forward, give your name and address for the record, if you want to speak. Okay, I guess nobody wants to talk tonight. All right, public hearing is now closed. Move on to election of city officials. Tax assessment board of review, Michael Sakosha for reappointment. His term will expire on November 1st, 2019.
Motion approved.
Motion made, second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Farina?
Yes.
Councilman Stiches?
Yes.
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 Next is the probate judge advisory commission, John Ennis, reappointment.
Council President, just a point of information, is Mr. Sakosha, is his name spelt correctly on the, I thought it ended in a "no," but I'm not sure.
We'll check.
Okay, thank you.
All right, probate judge advisory commission, John Ennis, reappointment.
Motion approved.
Motion made, second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Farina? Yes.
Councilman Stiches?
Yes.
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 Report of city officers, officials, officers. Is there any reports from the city officials? Hearing none, move on to executive communications. Our report on hiring of special counsel, consultants, et cetera pursuant to Charter Section 15.05.
Mr. President, that report was distributed to the council by the legal office earlier today, I believe.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coop.
I also have four requests from members of our fire department to continue in service for another year. The first of those requests comes from Deputy Chief Herbert Bassett, who, having reached his 57th birthday last week, requests to be continued in service for one year. I do have documentation evidencing his eligibility.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made, second, any discussion?
Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Farina? Yes.
Councilman Stiches?
Yes.
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 Mr. President, the next request comes from Deputy Chief Paul Delisi. Deputy Chief Delisi has also reached his 57th birthday and has requested to be continued in service. Chief McKenna has informed me that the documentation is on its way, although I have not yet received it, and I'd ask the council to grant his approval contingent upon receipt of that documentation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, and second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Farina?
Yes.
Councilman Stiches?
Yes.
Councilman Fox?
Yes.
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 Mr. President, Deputy Chief Michael Prokopio, who anticipates reaching his 55th birthday next month, has requested to be continued in service one year, and we do have documentation of his eligibility.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made, and second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Farina?
Yes.
Councilman Stiches?
Yes.
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 And finally, Mr. President, Captain Robert Ryan, who also anticipates reaching his 57th birthday next month, requests to be continued in service, and we do have documentation evidencing his eligibility.
Motion to approve.
Motion made, second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Farina?
Yes.
Councilman Stiches?
Yes.
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 Okay. Council President Communications. First of all, I want to wish everybody a belated, happy Thanksgiving to all. For the administration, I have, I'd like to have one thing answered for the next council meeting. The status of the ice rink. It's been approximately three to four years now that you've been negotiating to sell that piece of property. And I just want to know, is it going to be sold? Is it not going to be sold? What is the status exactly of it? And I'd like to know by the next council meeting. And that's my thought on your side for this evening. We'll move on to council member communications. Councilman Stychos.
Yes, I noticed that the Park Avenue Bridge, the one that goes over the railroad, that there's a sign on there saying it's going to be rebuilt in 2018, and I'm wondering if you could let us know what's happening with that. And I'm particularly concerned that there be a sidewalk on both sides of the bridge, because now there's only a sidewalk on one side of the bridge, and people walk in the street when they come to the barrier.
With my conversation today with state DOT and our Public Works Department, plans have been submitted and waiting for approval, and there are plans for sidewalks, pedestrian walkways on both sides of the bridge, both sides of the street.
Anything else you can tell us? I mean, basically, you're going to say the same thing.
Not at this time, because the plans haven't been approved by state DOT.
I see. Does the city submit those plans, or that's?
I'm not sure. I think it's state because it's the state that is, you know, doing the work.
Okay, thank you. I did have a question on the legal expenses, I wondered if I could ask. On page two, the very bottom item is, says zoning board members issues. Could you tell us what that is and why that's not being handled by the, Mr., I think it's Marcella, who handles all zoning board things?
Mr. President, I will venture a guess at this, I don't know for sure, but I believe that was an issue where a, the advice of the assistant city solicitor who advises the zoning board review was questioned, and based on that questioning, an outside legal opinion had to be obtained to reaffirm his advice. I can check on that and make sure that that's what happened, but based on the date and the topic, I believe that is the reason for that billing.
Okay, could you?
I will, I'll confirm that for you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilman Arquette. Councilman Santa Maria.
Thank you. Could I follow up on a question on legal fees on page five? Pacha Snow and Han, the district plan, are we done with that? Is that the last bill? The district plan, ACLU, 1, 2, 3, 4, last four. That should do it, right?
I think so.
I'm assuming Councilman Vecchio just, it's a small amount, so I'm assuming it's a small amount as lawyers' fees go.
To wrap it up.
Can we find out if that's the final bill for the next meeting?
Sure.
Okay.
No problem.
I'm guessing that that's it.
I would think it is, but who knows if there's some cleanup that has to be done. Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay. Jari Leiter-Arquette.
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair, Mr. Barone. Mr. Barone, I just need to know for the record what the policy is going to be on streetlights, because prior to, I guess, the summer national grid coordinated repairs of streetlights as far as if they were blinking or if they were out. And I used to call Marissa, and she was excellent, she always did a great job in Ward 3. So a light goes out, the city now owns the streetlights, what's the procedure? You have the floor.
The procedure will be the same as it was with National Grid. You can contact me, and I will forward that request to Public Works. We have a contract with RISE Engineering who will go out and fix it. During the transition of changing over to the new light bulbs, if you guys get any requests, if RISE has already been out there and changed the light bulbs and there's an issue, they will go back and fix it. If they have not been to that street to change those light bulbs, then they're going to wait until they get to that street to change it, and then they will repair whatever needs to be repaired.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilman Farina.
Thank you, Council President. Mine's more of a thank you to the Cranston Police Department, specifically Captain McEntire. There was an issue on Facebook, resident posted that someone was having excessive yard sales, messaged Councilman Bottz and I, because she lives in Councilman Bottz Ward. The yard sale's actually happening in Councilman Bottz's ward, and Captain McEntire immediately figured out what the problem was, went over there and talked to the person the next day, told him about the permitting rules and laws, and enforced those laws because the resident posted on Facebook there was an issue. It just showed how he went above and beyond to make sure that the community knows that the police did do their job, so I just wanted to formally thank Captain McEntire for just doing an outstanding job as he always does.
Any other council communications? Hearing none, we'll move on. Old business, is there any old business this evening?
There is none.
None? Introduce your new business.
Proposed ordinance 11-1601, right of fines, school committee's amendment to the collective bargaining agreement with the National Association of Government Employees, Local Rhode Island 153, The Custodians, to be referred to the Finance Committee for a hearing on December 8th. Proposed ordinance 11-1602, an amendment of Title 8.12 of the Code of the City of Cranston, entitled "Garbage Collection and Disposal for an Increase in Waste-Hauler Fines," to be referred to Public Works Committee for a hearing on December 5th. Proposed ordinance 11-1603, an amendment of Chapter 10.32 of the Code of the City of Cranston, entitled "Motor Vehicles and Traffic," to repeal a previous ordinance on Fortson and Greenway, to be referred to Ordinance Committee for a hearing on December 8th. The following will be referred to the Claims Committee on December, Monday, December 5th. Injury and personal loss claim of Karen E. Gilbolt from alleged incident during her period of employment as a member of the Cranston Police Department. The following personal injury claims, Michael Ferreira from alleged incident on October 5th, 2016, Connie Bartlett from alleged incident in October 21, 2016. Property damage claims of Kevin S. Santos from alleged incident on October 16th, 2016. Cristiano Rodi from alleged incident on November 1, 2016. Anne Maradian from alleged incident on November 14th, 2016. And that's all I have.
There's a claim for Anne Maradian, did you mention that?
Yes, I was corrected on that.
Oh, okay. Is there a motion to refer all matters as read by the city clerk?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, and second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Farina?
Yes.
Councilman Stiches?
Yes.
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 The next city council regular monthly meeting will be Monday, December 19th.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.